Good afternoon. I will call to order the February 11th meeting of the Minneapolis City Planning Commission. My name is Matt Brown. I serve as President of the Commission. I am joined today by Commissioners Magrino, Schrader, Lupke Pierre, Sweetsie, and Rockwell. Our first item of business is to approve the actions from the January 28th meeting. Commissioners may have a motion to approve those actions.
So move to the second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. Next, we will organize the agenda. You can find hard copies of the agenda in the hallway. We'll determine which items will be continued to another meeting, which items will be considered on consent, and which we will discuss, starting at the top. Item number one is the Ramsey Street Northeast vacation. That is a street vacation. That item will be continued to the March 11th meeting. So if anyone is here for that, it will be considered on March 11th. Item two is a community solar garden at 101 North 9th Street, conditional use permit for a solar energy system. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item two? Seeing no one will put that on consent. Item three is the Wyndham School addition at 5821 Wentworth Avenue. Several applications for a building addition at that location. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item three? Seeing no one will put that on consent. Item four is 2915 DuPont Avenue, 1,006 West Lake Street, and 2,900 Colfax Avenue South. Several applications for a new multifamily building at that location. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item four? Seeing no one will put item four on consent. Moving along. Item five is at 3021 East Calhoun Parkway, 3017, 3021, and 3025 East Calhoun Parkway. Several applications for a new residential building. That item will be continued to the February 25th meeting. If anyone is here for that, it will be considered on February 25th in two weeks. Item six is Malcolm Yards, 445 Malcolm Avenue Southeast, 419 through 504 29th Avenue Southeast, and 501 30th Avenue Southeast. Several applications for a mixed-use project at that location. We'll discuss item six. So our agenda as amended is as follows. Items two, three, and four will be on consent. We'll discuss item six. Item one will be continued to March 11th. Item five will be continued to February 25th. And Commissioners may have a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Commissioner Schrader.
I just wanted to comment quick on the number three, the Wyndham School. It's just been, I'm really excited about this project. Appreciate everybody moving it forward.
Thank you. And we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And that motion carries. Next, we'll move on to our committee of the whole consent agenda. And Commissioner Lupke Pierre, would you like to provide an update?
Yes, we approved a number of land sales, both from the north and south side, as noted in the agenda outside, as well as an additional land sale for duplex at 917 31st Avenue North. We found them consistent with the comprehensive plan.
All right. So we have a motion finding those land sales consistent with the comprehensive plan. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And that motion carries. Next, may I have a motion to continue item one to the March 11th meeting?
So move to the second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. Next, may I have a motion to continue item five to the February 25th meeting?
So move to the second.
And we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And that motion carries. Next, we will move on to our public hearings. And at this time, I'll open the public hearing for the items on the consent agenda. Again, that is items two, three, and four. Is anyone wishing to speak on any of those items? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, and Commissioners may have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move to the second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And that motion carries. Next, we'll move on to our one item per discussion, and that is item six, Malcolm Yards. Now, I'll mention that I am recusing myself from that item since my spouse's employer had some involvement in that project. So I will turn things over to Vice President Lupke Pierre to lead that discussion.
Thank you very much. I'd ask staff to give a brief report on the item.
Chair and Commissioners, let's see here. How are we doing here? Okay, not bad. So for Malcolm Yards Phase One Plan Unit Development, just as you, we've seen this project twice at a planning commission committee, the whole meeting for design review, but project site is just north of the University of Minnesota Transitway and next to the Surly Destination Group home. And as you're aware, in 2018, a comprehensive plan amendment was approved to re-guide this site, the future land use from industrial to transitional industrial, which allows for much more flexibility in terms of land uses, including residential and commercial. Images of existing conditions of the project site, and the applicant's proposed site plan with three buildings. On the west side, the conversion of the Harris Machinery Shop to a food hall. And on the southern portion of the site is a seven-story mixed-use building with approximately 32,000 square feet of commercial space and 143 residential units. And then north of that is 142-unit affordable housing project. Staff appreciates a number of elements of the project, the extension of 30th Avenue across that would improve the grid system within the area, the affordable housing portion of the project, the additional goods and services that would be brought by that large commercial use, and improved connectivity in the area. Also note, for pedestrians and for bicyclists. And throughout the site plan, they do have approximately 60, 65 bike parking spaces. So trying to encourage alternative modes of transportation. I, we'll talk to the public comments section in just a minute because there's a, you got a letter from the University of Minnesota as an addendum, and then within the public, within the packet, there was a large letter from the University of Minnesota. So I can touch on that briefly in a second, but I do want to talk about the conditions of approval. Two things. An application F, that being the preliminary plat application, staff, me, I incorrectly put a condition of approval about all site improvements shall be completed by March 15th, 2020. So I ask if you would consider striking that condition of approval for application F. And as far as I'm aware, from the applicant's standpoint, the only condition of approval that they object to is within the site plan review application. And they can confirm that, but that being the percentage of exterior materials on the affordable housing building. Specifically, so application E, condition of approval number seven, Building C shall comply with Minneapolis Guide to Exterior Materials in terms of percentage of exterior materials. In other words, not more than 30% maximum of fiber cement panels that are less than five inches, eight inches, eight inches thick. And that the number of exterior materials, da-da-da. So just that percentage of exterior material. And I can show you specifically what I'm talking about. The Harris Machinery Shop conversion to the food hall. This is Building A on the plan. Building B is the mixed-use building. And here's some renderings of the affordable housing project that does exceed the maximum cement board siding. And I have that, whoops, I think I have the breakout here, of exceeding it on three of the four elevations. So that's the one condition of approval I believe the applicant objects to. In addition to this, we know that the University of Minnesota is an important stakeholder in the area, and they, we really appreciate the thorough comments and all the conversations that have been happening between the University of Minnesota, wall development, and the city of Minneapolis, that be CPED and Public Works. And one of the biggest concerns is that how vehicles will cross the University of Minnesota Transitway, as there's about 100 buses that cross in each direction daily during, during the school year, and not wanting the times between the campuses impacted adversely. So within, I will let the applicant speak to this in a minute, but within the addendum packet is a letter from Carol Lansing talking about what the applicant is willing to commit to. This would be an additional, this would be a possible additional condition of approval. And in order to extend the 30th Avenue Southeast public street crossing of the University Transitway, the applicant shall, in conjunction with the Department of Public Works and the University of Minnesota, implement installation of traffic signal controls at the intersection of the Transitway with both extended 30th Avenue and at the existing Malcolm Avenue crossing. The traffic signal controls shall be designed based on the recommendations of the traffic signal analysis prepared by Kim Lee Horn, subject to the final approval of the Department of Public Works. Just one last comment. There's a lot of comments within that addendum letter from the University of Minnesota that in communicating with Public Works that are, that will be addressed with, through the preliminary development review process, separate from the land use process, and/or are taking place already. So we feel, staff feels, that a lot of those comments are outside of the realm of this decision. So I'm happy to answer questions you may have.
Does anyone have any questions for Aaron? Commissioner Rockwell.
Do we have, I only see reports by Wink in our packet, and this proposed condition references Kim Lee Horn traffic signal analysis. Do we have that in our packet?
No, I did, I, I knew that the, this is a new report that I became aware of last week, and, and then got a copy today. So I, I don't have a copy of that for you.
But staff, is staff comfortable with referencing that?
Yes.
Traffic signal analysis? I mean, we haven't seen it, so we're going to faith, but if you're...
Right, right. With, and with the communication and commerce, and with needing the support and approval of Public Works, and yes.
Great.
Yes.
Thanks.
Commissioner Schrader.
Could you elaborate a little bit more? You talked a little bit about how the Public Works was confident that a lot of the issues would be addressed later on. Could you elaborate?
Sure. Some of it had to do with staging with the project and how construction would take place. I am, in terms of equipment getting from the south side of the Transitway to the north side, that is something that I know that needs to be worked out between the developer and the university. But in terms of where equipment is placed on-site and respecting the university property lines, all those elements is one, one example that I see as the applicant needing to work with Public Works and the University of Minnesota in a way that's through permitting process and not through the land use entitlement process, the building permitting process specifically.
No, that's really helpful. I think also just on the permitting for kind of hooking up to the university's stormwater system. I mean, is that seen as something that would be done further down the, down the line? And if you wouldn't mind elaborating why?
Commissioner and Councilmember Schrader, I, with, we really do defer to the, to our Public Works colleagues in large detail on the stormwatering, stormwater requirements. We do touch that, on that, in a number, generally in the land use applications, but that expertise falls in that area. So, and I also know, and I know the applicant could talk about this more, of some elements being in flux in trying to work with the watershed district in the area and, and having an innovative system in place. But as noted in the plan unit develop, the conditional use permit, the applicant is, has increased the size of their stormwater system that they're going to do for the site, and that it will meet and has to meet the city Minneapolis requirements.
Great, thanks.
Are there any other questions for staff? All right, thank you, Aaron. Would the applicant like to come up and speak on this item? And just state your name and address for the record, then.
Good afternoon. My name is John Wall. I'm with the Wall Companies, the developer for this Malcolm Yards project in this first phase that we've brought to you today. Actually, brought to you several times, I think, with Kao, and again here today. First of all, I'd like to thank Aaron and all the, and all the hard work he's had to go through for this kind of complicated project. And I'm also happy to note that really the only issue is whether or not we have too many material, too much concrete exterior panel, I'm sorry, on the outside of the affordable building. And I realize that's a little bit of a stretch. We use it on a lot of our projects. It's a quality, you know, sturdy product. It goes on well in the winter, as far as the timing goes, and I'd like to, I'd like to have you consider not making that a requirement for this. The difference for us on this project is about $300,000 worth of exterior material. I mean, we can do that, but it means, you know, bringing down the costs, the interior materials where the people live, and quite frankly, we kind of hate to do that. We really take pride in the projects we develop. This exterior material is a quality product, and so I'd like to have you consider striking that as a, as a requirement for the approval condition, condition of approval, excuse me. And other than that, I'm happy to also report we've had really good working relationships so far with the University of Minnesota and the city of Minneapolis on this Transitway crossing deal. As Aaron mentioned, I'm not sure this is really something that needs to be a condition of approval for this phase of the development. We are working with Public Works and with the, and will continue to work through the approvals as we go through on all the little connections and, and that kind of stuff. So I think, I think we, you know, anyway, it's going well. We have a letter of, a letter of understanding with the city and the, and the university, and that's really all I had. I stand available for questions if you have any. Otherwise, thank you all very much for taking this up tonight.
Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? I haven't seen none, thank you. Would anybody else like to speak on this item? Come on up, state your name and address for the record.
Members of the Commission, my name is Monique McKenzie. I'm the Director of Campus Planning at the University of Minnesota. Thank you for your time. You have a copy of our letter that we sent dated February 7th, and the comments you've heard today, both from your staff and from the applicant, are essentially true. We have a letter of agreement, which means we're working on nailing down the final details and getting a full commitment from all parties involved in delivering this project for the benefit of the city. And I specifically am saying that in reference to a modeling study that shows that Transitway operations will not be impacted if signals are installed at 30th and Malcolm Avenue for the duration of the immediate build condition proposed to you by this applicant, as long as the signals are actually designed and installed the way they've been modeled. So that puts the onus back to Public Works, and I recognize your purview is not Public Works, but in terms of the city's investment in this and their part in it, I think that's something I wanted to underscore today. Secondly, though, a letter of agreement about traffic certainly helps this project get well underway. There are a few components related to site plan here that have not been fully resolved from the university's point of view. Your staff and the applicant have talked about permitting in terms of impacts to university land when the Transitway is crossed, both for purposes of temporary use, construction, but also for permanent. Signals will take care of that. Because we have not seen any details of the site plan, and the site plan is submitted to you most recently in your packets today, as well as a site plan that was submitted to you in the fall, there have been no changes in that site plan. We haven't seen any further proposals from the applicant to make differences, to make a different site plan. So perhaps there won't be any, but this, that is a possibility ahead of us. I don't think it's probably germane to your requirements, but it is something I wanted to bring to your attention. There are a series of complicated issues also embedded in the developments, the developer's application, and that is specifically related to a trail crossing that's mapped on the site plan. As it shows today, on the westerly side of the site, the trail would cross the Transitway not at a signalized crossing. So we'll just call that a mid-block crossing for the sake of argument. We have been deeply involved in the park boards' planning for the ground rounds, including the site, and the park board has not indicated any support for that mid-block crossing of a bike trail on the Transitway. So that's something I also want to bring to your attention. It's a site plan detail. It certainly would be resolved by the time building permits are pulled, but it is a difference from what you see today, and I wanted to highlight that. I think finally, I just want to take the opportunity to state that the university is very supportive and very cognizant of the fact that the land north of the Transitway will develop. This is the first parcel. There are many more parcels that we expect will change in their character. They won't be as dormant or non-trip generating. At the same time, the university's Transitway service, it essentially operates like a bus rapid transit corridor. And that's critical for us because it connects our St. Paul students to our Minneapolis sites. We have dominance of classrooms on the Minneapolis site. We try to make it 10-minute travel time between the two campuses. Our buses need to travel between 35 to 40 miles an hour. They travel about every two and a half, three minutes, one in each direction. That's why the signals are important. We're there, that's great. But as development continues, as pedestrians seek to cross the Transitway, as cyclists seek to cross the Transitway, our predominantly concern here is about safety, visibility, and sightlines. And I would urge you as a commission to continue to keep that in your head, pass it on to the next generation of commissioners as development occurs here. It's a very important feature, unless we can talk about taking Transitway completely out of the picture. I guess I'll just close by saying I think we have a clear path between the developer, the city, particularly Public Works, and the permitting offices of city government to understand how we can get these final details resolved, to achieve the developers' objectives, and to make sure the university's service impacts, particularly transit, are not impacted. So we are, we anticipate great success. We appreciate the time that your staff has spent, particularly the Councilmember's office and Public Works has spent to coordinate with us. We hope that we can continue to do that going forward when university land is directly impacted by a proposal made from an adjacent developer. So that's all. Thank you very much.
Does anyone have any questions for the speaker? Commissioner Magrino.
Hopefully, this turns into a question by the end of it, but I guess I'm not, I mean, I read through the letter, and it seems like you all have, sorry, like a tremendous amount of leverage in this situation because you sort of own the Transitway. And so, you know, if you don't want them to use the land for construction staging, they just can't use the land for construction staging, right? I mean, most of these seem fairly clear-cut that if they don't get your cooperation, then they just can't do it, right?
Well, we certainly would hope we don't get to that, but that could be a possibility. My flag to you is that those details aren't resolved at site plan review and the approval you're giving today. So if we need to make different arrangements for temporary construction, it may not ever affect site plan as it's built. But there are a lot of details not resolved, and developers, of course, have a timeline that's very urgent. So we just want to make sure that we keep working together to get those details resolved. And what the scenario you suggest is certainly a possibility, but one we have no intention of pursuing unless we are really back up against a wall.
Okay.
Oh, that was a pun, sorry.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I just, I mean, I, I think we all want this to work out well. I just was a little bit surprised that we had sort of a three-page letter, and it seems like most of these things will probably be resolved through that administrative process at the end. But anyway, thanks.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? Anybody? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Would anyone like to make a motion or start a discussion? Commissioner Colgill.
I just have one question, since this has been brought up now, this item two in the University of Minnesota's letter regarding the grand rounds connection there. Is the applicant on board with MPRB's suggested alignment, or is that going to be worked out here?
Good afternoon. Jeff Ellard with the Wall Companies as well. Yes, we have a memorandum of understanding with both the park board and the Mississippi Watershed Management Organization, under which we are working collaboratively to create this link for the grand rounds through our site and, and a signature green space actually just to the west of this parcel, where this trail will actually go into and get to 29th across, not at the mid-block. We own the land west of it, so we could actually put a sidewalk in on the west side of it that gets all the way to 29th, if that was a huge concern at this point in time. But it's outside the bounds of this PUD.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rockwell.
While you're still up there, one more question for the applicant. You've got a, a green roof on Building B. Is that correct?
Correct. Partial.
Partial, yes, on the, and is that definitely going to be included in the project?
We intend to, you know, it's...
I am inclined, because there are alternative compliance requested for landscape on Building B and C, to put that as a condition, just to be built as, as exists within your plan, but I didn't want to do that without putting that out there for comment and reaction.
Yeah, I guess I would say we are trying to work, as I indicated, with MWMO on a, one, we're doing a stormwater system for this phase, which will then hopefully be part of a larger district system in this area. And so our stormwater requirements are, we've been thinking more broadly about them. I understand you're asking more of a landscape question, not a 100% stormwater question, but we are trying to do something here that's different, and, you know, we're proposing this green wave between the buildings, a signature green space park. So I would ask your leniency not to put that as a condition in the approval, because things change as you try to firm up the details on it, but if you, I guess I'll leave it at that.
Very good. Thanks.
I guess I have a question for the applicant related to the exterior material requirement. I don't know who wants to take that one, but... I'm just, in your testimony earlier, you had said it would cost $300,000. And can you, just really quickly, was that to, if you were to replace it with a substitute material, it would meet the requirements, or does that just, if you resolve...
Yes.
Okay, so that isn't if you just get the 15% lower on the north, 16 lower on the south, and 37 lower on the east?
Right.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Colgill.
I will move to approve item A, the rezoning. Petition to rezone the properties of 445 Malcolm Avenue Southeast.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Is there discussion on this? Seeing none, Clerk, would you please call a roll? Colgill?
Here, aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
Seven zero. That motion passes.
Keep things going here. I will move to approve the conditional use permit to allow for a planned unit development with the three stated conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, Clerk, would you please call the roll? Colgill?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
Seven zero. That motion passes. Commissioner Colgill.
I'll move item C, conditional use permit, to allow for this food hall with the one stated condition.
And is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion? Seeing none. Clerk, would you please call the roll? Colgill?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
Seven zero. That motion, oh, that motion also passes.
I'll move item D, the variance, to approve the, approve the variance to increase the maximum size of a retail use in Building A.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, Clerk? Coleman?
Aye.
I mean, Colgill?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
Seven zero. That motion passes. We have two more items. Commissioner Colgill.
I will move, item E, site plan review, move to approve, all, with all, I think it's eight stated conditions.
There's a motion and a second. Commissioner Rockwell.
I will add two conditions.
and 30th Avenue Southeast and at the Transitway and the existing Malcolm Avenue Crossing. Traffic signal controls shall be designated, designed based on the recommendations of the traffic signal analysis prepared by Kim Lee Horn, subject to final approval by Public Works. And second, to add a condition that the green roof as proposed in the application be built on, on building B.
Any other comments? Do you accept the friendly amendment for the two stated condition?
Sorry, yes, I certainly do.
Awesome. All right, seeing no other comments, clerk, would you please call roll? Kogel?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
Seven zero. That motion passes. Commissioner Kogel.
I will move item F, the, to approve the site plan review, to allow for a three-building planned unit development in the C3A district with the one stated condition.
Correction, striking the one stated condition as per staff request?
Oh, correct.
Or amending the date, whichever.
I will just strike the one stated condition. Or do I need to amend? Yeah, okay.
All right, there's a second. Is there any discussion on this? All right, seeing none. Clerk, would you please call roll? Kogel?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
Seven zero. That motion passes, and that item is complete. Having no other items on our agenda for tonight, this concludes tonight's planning commission meeting. Thank you for coming.[1747.98]